To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mrs. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Citizen of participation, Rachel Kane.
Good evening. I am the one of the coaches for our Girls on Run team at the Pitts Elementary. We are seventeen girls in third through fifth grade. They have been working on stealth schemes, team building, and on their running skills. On November twenty-first, they will be taking part in the wave year run right before the pride parade in Saganah, and I'd like to encourage all of you to come and support them this year going on. Thank you.
What time is that?
It's at ten fifty-five a.m.
Where is it starting?
Castle Museum in Anthea Anderson, Richmond.
What's the date of date?
November twenty-first.
Vanessa Monroe.
For those of you that don't know, I'm Rachel Brown. I'm your current sixth grade meeting. I'm a rising teacher here at Bridgeport. It's called the school district. I'm a resident of Bridgeport and taxpayer, and I've also been an alumni from the school district, so I spent my entire life there. I'm standing for you tonight because I'm very disappointed in some things that have happened. With the last board meeting, you guys voted to not explore any options as far as trying to create a plan for what we do for the students that we lost and to make sure that our budget deficit plan continues the way it does. Before, we've heard suggestions and also the union bargaining union have heard some talk of things that, you know, a possibility teachers maybe ask to give back some more money and to make some more sacrifices. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood before any of that happens, what you were asking us to do, if that is even an option. For those of you that don't know me, I was a homeowner in the district in last fall. Because of my decreased salary, which I make less now than when I did in the district seven years ago, I had to walk away from my home and move back in with my parents. I am currently with fifty thousand dollars in debt because of my education, and that continues to grow every day. I take on every extra assignment that I can. I coach within the district. I do summer school. I sub on my prep periods when necessary, and I do those things without complaining because I love this school. I've been here my entire life. I try to fit things into my schedule that really don't fit just because I know they need to be done. When somebody asks me to do something, I don't complain and I get it done. I also work a summertime job, which a couple of you eventually come and they see me, although I don't think you knew who I was, but I work from June to September trying to make my ends meet, and they go. And now because of this, I currently qualify for public assistance. I feel that I'm a very qualified person who gives my heart and soul to this job. I continue to pour everything I have, and I would love to continue my career here. This is where I want to be. I don't want to go anywhere else. You can't make my ends meet if I stick. I struggle with that choice, and sometimes I feel like you guys don't even make that a matter sometimes. I just beg of you to please continue to do more positive things so that we move in the right direction, and do not ask us teachers to make any more sacrifices because I don't feel that it is the teachers' fault that students continue to leave this district. We do our job, we support our students, and I do everything actually that I can for them. It is not my fault that they left, yet I'm the one that's left taking the responsibility. Thank you.
Sue Rossford.
Good evening. My name is Sue Rossford. I'm the MEA, District Director for the teachers here in Bridgeport, and I'm here tonight because there are some things going on in the district as far as the budget, et cetera, and those that have been greatly concerned. As board members, you have been elected to this board, and you have a responsibility, and that responsibility is not only to the numbers of this community, but also to its students and the teachers and, you know, other employees of this district, and has to keep this district financially secure. Several years ago during negotiations, the BEA came to the district and showed them how we could bring in more revenue by opening up a school of choice to just a certain number of students per grade level so that we could make, take the benefit of the extra revenue but not have to add any more teachers. It wouldn't cost anything more to do it. The district wasn't interested in doing it. Consequently, we figured you could have gained about another seven hundred thousand dollars, and you turned your bad side. Later on, following here, the laws changed regarding insurance, and although we had a contract in place, we were not required to offer anything to help offset the cost of our insurance. We came to you, and we offered to pay ten percent of the insurance for that year until the contract expired, at which time then the district would be able to charge us the full twenty percent. District said it wasn't enough money, or Vanessa wasn't enough money, and said nothing else. Didn't try to negotiate with us further, didn't try to counter, nothing. Those were lost dollars that you could have removed. Over the last three years, teachers have lost anywheres from seven to ten thousand dollars. Some of them are losing as much as seven to eight thousand dollars a year because they are not getting sets, they are not getting their lanes, they are not getting longevity. And with four and a half percent or four percent rollback this year, they're continuing to lose money. As you just heard from Vanessa, they cannot continue to lose money. They're losing their homes, they're losing, they're, they're not being able to purchase cars, they're not, they're not able to live a life. No one that has a bachelor's of science in education should qualify for public assistance. It is absurd that we are treating our teachers that way. Recently, the board voted to, there was a recommendation, I should say, from the finance committee, to explore other cost-saving measures, and the board voted it down. Now, I don't understand this. I, I don't understand how you cannot even explore other cost-saving measures. When you, when we agreed that there would be rollbacks for these teachers, each and every one of them had to go back, look at their budget, and say, okay, what can I afford to continue doing, and what can I afford to continue doing? They've made the choice not to go to a movie, they've made the choice not to go on vacations, they've made the choice to move back in with their parents because they cannot afford mortgages. Every dollar that they lose is a dollar that doesn't come back into this community because if they don't have the eight thousand dollars to spend, they're not gonna, they can't spend it here in the community. So it's affecting the community as well. I don't understand how you can sit back and say, well, we're not even going to explore other avenues to save money. That's, that is your responsibility as a board. Instead, what I'm hearing is, well, let's just have the teachers return the five percent rollback. Let's possibly ask them for another five percent. I have been asking since September for a list of new teachers, current seniority list. I have also in the last several weeks asked for the current census for the insurance as well as the cost of payroll. I can't get that information. Nobody seems to be able to give it to me. Now, I don't understand how you can come and say, let's just ask for another five percent from the teachers. Do you know how much money that is? If you can't tell me how much money that is, how do you know that's a good suggestion? Teachers are being asked to agree to take overloads and not get paid for them. We're looking at hiring subs rather than full-time teachers. I don't believe that's a quality education that our taxpayers deserve. When I ask the question about what's this going to cost, everything I get is, well, I'm not sure. Well, we're not really sure. Well, if you can't, you can't tell me, then how do you know it's going to help with the Also, this is information that we need to have so that we can determine whether or not that's a good way to go. I have to have this information so I can make an informed decision for my members. And the contract states that when we are in negotiations, which we typically are not at this point, but if you're going to come to us and ask us for concessions, you're pretty much bargaining with us, this contract, Article twenty-two, states you must give us this information. But not only are you violating CARA, you're violating the contract. I have been accused of being in cahoots with Saganah because I also represent the teachers in Saganah. I'm a resident of Saganah, I was a teacher in Saganah for twenty-some years, and I've been accused of just wanting the district to go belly up because then Saganah will get all those students. I have been through the closure of a district because I represented the unit of district, and nobody, nobody, okay?
Sue your time job.
I'm just gonna say this, look at your budget. You pay, you are at three point two million dollar deficit, you're down now to one point six million dollars. If you just keep going the way that you are, your deficit will be paid off in time, and there's no reason to ask for more money from your employees. Thank you.
What were, what were the things that you said that you asked for that you didn't get?
I've asked for at least the list of new teachers, the seniority list, the payroll information so that I know how much payroll costs, as well as the insurance census.
Who asked you to request the death from?
Carol Selby.
When, when was that request?
Uh, the first request was made September twenty-eighth. And we've made repeated requests since then.
And was that a rumor that you are repeating that someone from this board was insinuating that?
Someone told me that a board member said that, yes.
Because this is the first time?
It was last year, it wasn't this year. And I don't know that it was in an open board meeting, it may have been in a private conversation.
That, that was gonna be my question to you. I didn't recall anybody up here saying anything about a five percent rollback. And also, there is action that's gonna be taken by this board. There's been a, just so everybody knows, there's been an ad hoc committee forum, and that ad hoc committee will be chaired by Mr. Lang. I will be on the ad hoc committee, Mr. Dempsey Allen will be on the ad hoc committee along with some teacher reps, steelworker reps, transportation, and we will be looking at all the options. So we are gonna take action on our end reference.
All right, thank you.
Can I just answer a couple of the questions that you asked, Teddy? In terms of the list of new teachers, BEA president, Ms. Larry Brown, has the list of all the new teachers because he gets the board act every month just like you do. The payroll information, uh...
I don't have that list.
You get a list, you get a personnel committee report every month with the list of the new teachers, teachers hired, you get, you get it every month.
Then it should be easy to get it to me as well.
Larry Brown gets that information every month. The payroll information, it's my understanding that we have not done the lottery, although that's something that we have to do real soon because we have several teachers that came in on the same day, same year, and that has to be rectified using the lottery system, which is something we're gonna be putting together real soon. Thank you.
Next order of business, board members, agenda adjustments. Are there any agenda adjustments? I'd like to make a... You need a motion to appoint an ad hoc committee.
I'll make a motion that we appoint the ad hoc committee.
Is there support?
What is the purpose? What's the purpose? Is that accurate?
Pardon me, Mr. Lang?
Do we have a purpose for this committee? I think I have a brief mission to do. Pardon me? Yeah, I have a brief mission to do.
Go ahead.
The ad hoc committee needs to be tightly coupled with the finance committee, which is why I believe the charter of the ad hoc committee is to identify, quantify, and scope possibilities for consideration. This committee is simply an additional venue for broader base of input, does not nullify or anyway usurp the competition with our staff consultants that are actively working on this matter. It is a parallel process whose purpose is to aid and accelerate the process of possible and actionable cost reductions.
Are we gonna decide what time line? What's the timeline?
Yes.
What's the timeline? We can keep this bucket on, on and on, but you gotta have a timeline. So the house committee, what's the time?
I, I would like to talk to, about this and table this until I don't, after, uh, number ten. I'd like to further discuss that. If you wanna make this an agenda adjustment, can we make it after number ten?
There's a motion, there's a vote. Yeah, a motion.
Can we rescind the motion and support?
You can.
I will rescind my support.
You send your motion.
Yes.
So we will, what if, after the finance committee report, I would like, okay?
Technology committee report, Mr. Nelson?
All right, I'm just coming back to the board. Last year, when we did the upgraded Atkins, we came back and pulled, complete that project. Scope last year included you in the high school, Thomas White. We did not have the empty money to do that, but then the right amount of cash is back. There's some additional funding opportunities we have, so that'll be in the future. That's all I have.
We didn't, we didn't hear that out here, Jay. Can you have him use the mic?
I'm sorry. So last year, when we did the Atkins upgrade, I'm trying to get it over here. Last year, we did the Atkins infrastructure upgrade, and we did not have the funding to do the high school and Thomas White. We have an opportunity this year to complete that project, so that'll be coming to the finance committee for a recommendation and then to the full board.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
You're up.
This is Mike Rowe from CUT, Constellation Limited.
Appreciate the opportunity to help just tell you a little bit about our business. I talked to a few of you one-on-one, and Chris has had a lot of his, we're a full-service technology, we're a service business in all over the United States, all over Michigan. And Chris, he is along with Bridgeport has this passion about seeing what we can do as a company to help with the technology move forward. He's handed over a little information about our firm, also a lot of his bio information. He gives a lot to the table, and he's asked specifically for the opportunity to work with you, should we give him that opportunity? A couple of things that are unique about us, we realize that technology is expensive, and we work hard to customize what your district needs, particularly at the most dominant or the most painful of the button. So, you know, we don't just force you into a contract and, and leave you saying, well, I still got it, that's what you signed on for. We're constantly evaluating, looking at what it takes to give you the most return for your investment in technology. We also realize that a lot of districts don't know, you know, how could this technology that really makes sense for the future to, to look at hardware, to look at the full system and see, you know, are you gonna get stuck in a couple of years in a row? We work hard to make sense for you and help you form that, that technology plan. We're very proactive, we're not just break things. We try to get ahead of issues, get ahead of problems. It's easy just to react to this isn't working, that's not working. These things aren't working, but it's better to get ahead of that game and be sure that we're being competitive in the maintenance that's required. Our rates are there for you to look at, we're competitive with anybody else that's out there. We, we've been in business for eight years, we've got twelve employees, and we service a lot of customers, and we have growth and success rate, of course, good.
If you guys have any questions, you have my email or contact info in front of you. Basically, I just want to help you come up with some more cost reduction options that may come into play as you guys are looking forward as a district with all the different things you have on your plate. I understand as a board member myself from Montrose Schools that budgets and constraints are always something you have to work with and work around and play with, but there are many things that can be done that I think I can help bring to the table for you guys that will not only help you accomplish your goals but reduce your costs as well. We look forward to putting together a formal proposal for services and bringing that back to you guys. If there's any questions you have in the meantime, Carol has my email address, phone number, contact information, all that on the stuff as well.
Any questions we can answer for you right this morning?
What school district do you currently provide, I don't know?
The school district we're currently providing support for is for Montrose. We have about fifteen years cumulative education experience, I mean, seven years in schools myself. Chris has done about seven years in schools, and I have other technicians as well that have experience there.
I worked for Saganah Public Schools, he's worked for Gas City Schools, it just depends on who, when, where, why, whatever talk we're on. Is there any other questions?
So you have a benefit for technology committee as of yet?
Not yet.
Just so, just so everybody is aware, we presently have Simco. That contract is up December thirtieth. So you need to act as soon as possible, and that contract is eighty-five thousand dollars is what that currently is. I'm not asking for any action tonight, but just to make you aware of what's, what's going on.
We need to put that out, the competitive bid.
No. It's a service, and I will tell you that we have a proposal from the Saganah High School, but it's in the works.
Would it be reasonable to expect to have proposals to what, on that choice or the December board meeting, so we can make sure that we have a seamless transition if we choose to follow a different path than currently?
Ask a question for me.
Can we have a proposal for the December board meeting so that we can have a transition if we choose to not go with this?
Yes, we have, yes, yes, and I'll make sure that we get it as we know it wants to go in the finance paper, that we have it, or the technology thing.
This is not technology, in my opinion, this is not a technology committee issue. This is administrative issue. Here apples to apples, make a decision. We need to lay the process, we're trying to bring multiple, that's my view.
Have you talked to Simco, and you'd like them to know that we're looking for others?
Yeah.
Okay. Have they offered to do any things for you?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
There you go, I was probably was here.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be submitting some changes that we think is appropriate. So we'll have the package for the December board meeting to make the decision.
There will be a comparison between all three so that they're all, so we can see what we have to do and making sure that they're all the same.
I will work with Carol to make sure, that's that. I will work with Carol to make sure that it's the same for all of them.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next order of business, professional learning center and professional development update, Miss Zoe.
Good evening, Board of Education members. I submitted an informal sheet to you tonight with specific details regarding professional learning, but I'm going to give a presentation. On August thirty-first of this year, during the opening day session for Bridgeport's Valley Community Schools, I presented to our district with a speech citing a metaphor that we are now riding a wave of momentum. I interjected a metaphor of riding a wave that morning to visually help staff identify and compare our prior year with the upcoming year, that we did indeed survive the announcement of priority and transformation. We did indeed immerse ourselves into accepting responsibility to become better educators. We did indeed commit to increase enormous amounts of our personal energy devoted to professional responsibilities here. This year, our momentum is based on synergy, positive energy, teacher commitment, building rapport, and most importantly, time. It is my pleasure and purpose tonight to bring your attention to the time that our teaching staff has committed to our district to increase teaching and learning. Not only their time, but also their energy level needed to be productive within professional learning. Professional learning communities, or we know them as the acronym PLCs, is one strategy that our teaching staff has dedicated their personal time to professional time. Due to the priority status of Atkins Elementary School, teaching staff employed in that building have agreed to weekly PLCs during school and after school. Grade level teams have agreed to meet during their common planning time, and whole staff has agreed to meet after school for approximately one and a half to two hours. Sounds insignificant maybe to you, yet it is a monumental agreement. When our teachers agreed to participate in these PLCs, they agreed to ask their own spouses, significant others, friends, family, and most importantly, their own children to wait for their return from work, work that in reality ends at three, three fifteen. The wave of momentum that our teaching staff is riding now is they agree to participate in the PLCs to increase their teaching and learning skills. Forty-five minutes of common planning time PLCs times one day per week, times nine, times nine weeks of school right now equals at least seven extra hours devoted to student achievement. Add in six PLCs after school times ninety minutes equals at least nine extra hours devoted to teacher improvement. Finally, add in two district-wide PLCs after school and ninety minutes equals at least three extra hours devoted to improving student behavior. Riding that wave of momentum right now, teachers at Atkins Elementary, just this grading term alone, have given this district a grand total of approximately nineteen extra hours of professional time decreased from their own personal time. It is important that our board and community acknowledge this fact. It is important that we appreciate their efforts, and it is wise that we continue to grant teachers the respect for wanting to improve while under the microscope of MDE. If truth be known, by the end of this year, Atkins Elementary teaching staff will have a grand total of approximately eighty extra hours or more. Sounds more like they're riding a tsunami than a wave of momentum, doesn't it? Let's not forget the rest of the teaching staff in this district. Let's not forget the rest of the teaching staff in this district. Based on building level PLCs and district-wide PLCs, Thomas White, Bridgeport Middle School, and Bridgeport High School teaching staff have committed to at least five PLCs since the beginning of the school year, totaling eight extra hours of professional time for them. Central Office, I can guarantee, is dedicated to providing the support and expertise for teaching and learning to improve them during the PLC time, just as this teaching staff is dedicated to participating in the PLCs offered to increase their knowledge and skills. This is a very delicate relationship that is becoming more purposeful, effective, and efficient this year. One highlight that needs to be illuminated is our new consultant, Mr. Mark Welton, who is a PLC coordinator subcontracted through IEE. Mark is assigned to mainly Bridgeport High School. His role is to initiate student engagement strategies in lesson planning, leadership, plan and collaborate with this administration, plan and prepare with me as the director to ensure an alignment of BHS professional development with the district's improvement goals. Let me give you a synopsis of what this teamwork has occurred between Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Legallo, Mr. Welton, and myself to prepare the PLCs. This team is visionary. Either we are very entertaining or we use the politically correct vocabulary. We love being engaging. A highlight this year to begin our PLC process that you may not have witnessed was for the high school teachers were involved for the first PLC being issued a real invitation to the administrative staff at their first PLC. At the location designated on the invitation, staff was met with live music playing, "Get on the Bus." Mr. Legallo was dressed as a crossing guard and Mr. McCarthy was dressed as the bus driver. Mr. Welton was the bus attendant collecting fare. BHS staff boarded a real bus in the parking lot, which was obviously a metaphor for our PLCs. In a dramatic announcement delivered by the bus drivers, a heartfelt message was given to the staff. We are driving this bus forward with momentum. You can either stay on our bus of improving teaching and learning, or you may get off the bus at the next stop. A team building activity was conducted and then we moved the PLC to the media center. From beginning to end, this first PLC was set the tone for the year for Bridgeport High School. Definitely, they are riding the wave of momentum. I want the board to understand that our high school has taken a very innovative and visionary approach to PLCs. It is actually unique due to the brainstorm of Mr. McCarthy. In collaboration with our team, staff has been assigned topics of interest for PLC groups related to our school improvement plan. PLC groups are then required to conduct action research on their own personal time, implement these actions within their own classroom, discuss and analyze the data, and then present all the findings to their staff. Basically, each PLC group in the high school is discovering what works, what doesn't, how to improve it, and whether it is an effective strategy to increase academic achievement. In the student learning world, we call this hands-on cooperative learning or inquiry-based projects. At this point, our BHS teachers are like students in learning this PLC process this year while also determining whether strategies identified in our school improvement plans are actually effective. Effective enough that they will close the achievement gap between the students and decrease the negative student behaviors. So what's the status of the PLCs for our other two schools, Thomas White and Bridgeport Middle School, who are not in priority status? Our teaching staff there is adamantly focusing on their school improvement plans aligned to a district improvement plan. They are targeting positive behavior intervention and supports, which we call PBIS. They're integrating Corsic strategies, guided school improvement training, FIM, or focused instruction model, mindfulness training, assessment literacy, and implementing the Common Core State Standards in Literacy. Each PLC that a teacher willingly participates in is a pertinent, productive, and meant to improve their teaching and learning for all these teachers and for all the students. Thank you definitely to all the teaching staff for riding the wave of momentum. One peak has been extremely high here with enthusiasm from staff for our PBIS commitment. Every teacher seems to possess and predict that we are going to have a successful kickoff on January eighth for the PBIS. Another sincere thank you to all the teaching staff for riding another wave of momentum. This high peak has been the engagement and commitment from staff while in the half-day PD mandatory days that are required. Our teachers have been actively engaging, actively listening, actively questioning all our presenters, and actively being present when the information is given. Many staff members have even commented that they are learning, really learning. In conclusion, I would like to leave you with some parting words based on a bestseller novel, "Grit to Great", which is a recommendation once again from Mr. McCarthy, which will be used in a book study with his high school staff. In the words of Aristotle, "We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence then is not an act, but a habit." We just need grit. Grit is sweat. Grit is hard work. We are nothing special yet, but we are riding and driving and moving from ordinary to extraordinary. We will move this district from grit to great. Thank you.
I just have one question. This may not be my question. I just don't quite understand. As the PLCs are taking place, is there a way to measure the progress before the end of the school year to see if the achievement gap has been closed? Or is there a way to see that when the teachers are learning these new things, that they're actually implementing them? Yeah, if it's helping or is any of that measurable?
Well, I definitely keep attendance of PLCs. And then anything that is conducted in a PLC is usually based on something from professional development or the school improvement plan. So if you look at the school improvement plan, all of the goals have AMOs, which are annual measurable objectives. And whatever we said the goals were is what we're looking for measurement from the AMO. The vehicle is the PLC. We do all of that through a PLC or PD or staff meetings or personal time.
Are you able to determine what is working and what is not working as you determine the PLCs?
Are you talking about whether PLCs are working or what we're actually looking at in the PLCs?
Yeah.
I think that would be the data depending on what we're actually doing in a PLC. For example, our district-wide PLCs are dedicated only to PBIS and we have surveys and we do have an assessment SWES and different things that we'll be looking at. We'll have our baseline. So we look at PBIS in PLCs and we have those measurements, so.
That is what we're going to need at the end of the day. We're going to need some type of data, you know, just to see how effective it is or what we need to change.
And I would, once again, reiterate, that would be your AMOs in your school improvement plans. And each school improvement plan, they have goals. And then you're hopefully doing the goals all year and then you're looking at whether your AMO has been met. Depending on what's cited in there, different things for our district. Some is NWEA, DRAs.
Is that pretty much happened?
Yeah, well, like you said, the targets, you can see them too. Anybody in this world could log out and see what our goals in our school improvement plan is. So this is just our tool of reaching there. So if we are not reaching those objectives in the long term, it's going to work.
As you're progressing through it and.
Trapping.
Correct.
And you're hoping that your AMO that you picked is aligned to the state standards and the state assessments? And then I forgot, and we have PSA T for high school.
And that is happening. It is all aligned. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Personnel report. There's a recommendation, board members, from Ms. Salvi. Recommended actions to approve the personnel report, which includes a teacher termination. Ms. Salvi.
You have the formally, I've read in your board packet, a recommendation for teacher termination. And you're receiving your packet rationale for termination of non-tenure probationary teacher.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the personnel.
Support. Move to support.
I have a question.
Question.
I spoke with a teacher. I spoke with a teacher that they recommended to be terminated. And I really wanted her to come to utilize her new process. And I guess she chose not to. But I've known her for a long time. And it does appear, and I will say this, I'm not making any excuses because I think she agrees that she was found guilty of our treatment. But she was hired just, I think, a week before school started. In one of the classes, I think she said she had very little to work with as she started the class. So she has been trying to develop curriculum as she has been trying to teach a class. And I wish that she had spoken with her administrator because she was having problems. It's kind of back to the fact now. But she is a very capable person. I hate that this goes on her record looking badly. She's a very capable person and I think she believes that she is making progress. But some serious mistakes have been made, I understand. I just wanted to say that.
And if I can just add, I too have had a few, um, things as a teacher and there's a couple of big issues. One is creating a safe and orderly environment for the students. And that's really a big, that's a big issue. She admits that she can do a lot better in there. And then the other is classroom management and that's a curriculum issue. Really the biggest issue is the setting an orderly environment. And she originally asked to address the board this evening, full session, and then changed her mind.
We have a motion. We have support. I'll call both, please.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Saigman?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Ruck?
Yes. Next order of business, consent agenda, payment of the bills. Budget report minutes from Monday, October twelfth, twenty fifteen, business meeting, and the October twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, committee of the board meeting.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Support. Move to support a discussion? Any discussion? I'll call both, please.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Saigman?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Ruck?
Yes. Next order of business, policy committee report. Mr. Lang?
I will give you a verbal leave from November sixth for about an hour and a half. We'll do the first section of the policy. We had a very effective meeting. We made some recommendations that we'll be coming forward with. Board review at a future date, so we are actively working on policy. Mr. Nelson, do you have anything to add?
No, he took that.
Thank you.
Next order of business, board members, finance committee report recommendations. Mr. Long?
Recommended actions, motion to approve the finance committee recommendations. Okay, I was not present on the twenty-sixth when this came up. A recommendation and I really think there was some different things coming out of this. But when the recommendation, I don't understand it. We're going to negotiations with the VAA regarding freezing the pay, five percent wage payback. This was a recommendation again. Request, and this is a very touchy subject, but request, and the word is proposals for outsourcing custodial transportation and maintenance. The word is proposals. Outsourcing is scary. Does it not mean that we are going to do that? It means we have to get information to make an informed decision on anything that we are going to do. I've been thinking about this long and hard since this and I made it a point at this finance meeting that we should not only be looking at these three areas, but we need to be looking at other areas. We need to be looking at every operation that we do, every single thing. We can't just say, "Okay, teachers, you got to do this. Okay, steelworkers, you need this. Okay, administration, you need to take this." We have to look at every single thing. This is why I wanted this brought back up. This is why I wanted to discuss this prior to this ad hoc committee, which I fully support. But we have to, in my opinion, go out and get information so we can be informed if in fact it will save us money. I just heard a comment that I didn't appreciate, something about union breaking. That's not what this is about. This is not telling anybody, "You're going to lose your job." It's trying to get an informed decision on everything that we do. That's why I will support this ad hoc committee. We need to hear from every one of you that have a stake in this so we can actually look at it. And if we can save a hundred thousand dollars by shutting off lights, but we need two hundred thousand, then you might have to shut off gas too. But if you, if you're two hundred thousand dollars in debt with the state and we've lost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we got to look at everything. And if we can save more than that, because, correct me if I'm wrong, before we had these lots of students and this money, they were still in a deficit. So why stop at saving a hundred thousand dollars if we could save three hundred thousand and get out of this deficit faster? And make our teachers so they don't have to get that sacrifice like that. But we have to look at every single thing. And we have to have your support and your ideas because I'm not the smartest guy out there and I'm smart enough to know I'm not. And there's nobody up here that has all the answers, but together we're strong and we can get there. So that's what I'm bringing, and I said we need to get this back on the agenda. If you look at this, three, study closing of Thomas White, develop a plan. Again, study, plan, words you mean to get information, does not mean we're going to do it. After this vote, I had conversations and I heard it got pretty not pleasant. And all of these things, if there's any steelworkers out there, I think you are, I'm not looking to take your job away from you. I'm not looking to say, "Teachers, we need ten percent." I don't know where that came from. That was the first time I heard that. But it's got to be shared sacrif- But it's gotta be shared sacrifice from everybody, instead of just one or two groups. We gotta look at every way that we can save money. That's what the ad hoc committee will look at. That's why I was really shocked when I heard that this didn't pass on the 26th, the one time I finally missed a board meeting. Since I've been on this board, that was the first time, right? And I called that night, and I found out, and I was confused, okay, and there was some miscommunication. So this is not a recommendation to outsource. It's just to get information. So if there's not any, I was told it wasn't that clear, and I was told it was clear, it wasn't clear, but I wanna make it crystal clear. It's just to get, this recommendation from the finance committee, is to get information, because if it's not gonna save us a lot of money, what's the sense of doing it? So we have to get information, just, a lot of people were making comments that were up here about, you have to have the information, you have to know what it's gonna do, and we have to get the information. So again, I'd like to, any discussion would be greatly appreciated.
Any discussions, we don't have the motion, it's a vote.
Correct.
Good. Can I make the motion that we? Yeah, making the motion that we recommend this as written, those three items. And I would like to also, uh, add anywhere else that we can look at that scary word of outsourcing, wherever else we can save money. And I brought that up, that it was all the, all the union groups across the board, and it is sort of in the office, wherever we can look, we should be looking. And it's just gaining information. So I would make that recommendation, um, that we came out of the finance committee.
Your recommendations are written from the finance committee, are they?
We can bring the others up still, but, um, or we can add, but I would, we definitely have to do this as written.
All right, can we clarify, would we have a motion on the floor without the recommendations as presented by the finance committee? That's the motion on the floor, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So now you need support.
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 Now, discussion.
I think that we should wait and let the ad hoc committee look at all, everything, the whole package first, before we go down doing the next.
I would respect that, disagree, we don't have time to wait. We need to move. The purpose of the ad hoc committee is not to eat that things that the personal finance committees bring forward, but rather to look for and seek out additional opportunities. We have very competent administrative staff, and we have consultants on board that have gone forward with these recommendations, and I think we need to respect that there's like matter expertise. While engaging members of this community and the broader workers, to see if there's other opportunities. So this is not in replacement of, and it's not to serve the finance committee, it is to help as, as an augmentation to that process.
I would like to add to that, as little new at this, but I did not understand, or I should say, I do not understand, why we need an ad hoc committee when we are on the finance committee. I don't quite understand how we need the two committees.
The ad hoc committee is, is made up of, will be made up of employees from all the different bargaining groups. Teachers, steelworkers, transportation, food service, administration, and the board. And that, and what would that, what that committee's goal will be is, is to get all their recommendations, their input, their ideas, what we can do to, uh, slice into that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But some of your.
Possibly even into the other deficits.
Some of your key people that have knowledge to that are on the finance committee, your CFO, your accountant.
Uh, they're, they're on the committee. Melissa Carroll are also gonna be on the ad hoc.
So.
Pete.
The finance committee is included in the ad hoc, basically?
A member of, of that.
Okay, okay, that one.
It is, okay.
I thought it was.
No, no, administration is also, no, everybody.
In the past, the staff has come up with some really good ideas to save, but they've never been used, so this way, they'll be able to have their input into it before it's decided.
And I, I like everything Mr. Long said, because we are not per school district facing these issues.
Absolutely not.
And many school districts have answered these questions, or if they answered them wrong, have learned from mistakes that have been made. And we researched this, we can hopefully avoid some mistakes just because of the experience, so it is very important. I think that our CFO was probably has more knowledge about other school districts that have faced deficits than any of the rest of us is.
And, and that's why the CFO is part of the committee?
Thank you.
We did bring up several school districts that have outsourced, and the problems they've had with it at the last meeting that we had.
I know, but they're still.
Well, that's, that we will be, that's, we will be looking into that.
Would, would our current committee structure allow an opportunity for people to still have it?
Certainly.
Versus the ad hoc committee?
The ad hoc committee, I've asked, um.
You asked me to.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown to get ideas from his vouchers, um, Mr. Massey.
My, my only concern, and I did say this, and then I was away, and I had a little time to think about it. How long is it gonna take to get this committee up and moving and rolling, and what kind of timeframe do we have? Because we, we don't really, we don't think enough committee to take three months to make a decision that we have people out here that are gonna give us information about anyway.
And I, I think it is important too that we get, we get input from our, from our, all our employees, all our employee groups, they're the ones that are here every day, so they might have some cost cutting ideas, suggestions.
But they could also bring us the finance committee.
Yeah, they could.
Wouldn't it be more appropriate to have a workshop, the whole board sharing everything at one time, from the different paper piece? So out there, and put on ad hoc, ad hoc committee, that's going to report up to the board. Why wouldn't we just have a workshop, invite those folks to come in, and share their ideas to the entire board, rather than just a session? I don't see the value in that.
I, I think we have to do whatever is gonna expedite this process.
It doesn't matter to me how we go about doing it. The only reason I brought it up was because the only recommendation that was on the table was outsource. And that's, that's why the committee was formed. So I don't have to care, I don't care how we, I don't care how we get there, let's just do it.
There was never a recommendation to outsource. Those words are not correct. There's a recommendation to explore outsourcing and two other items as well, as well as anything else available. There was never a recommendation to outsource anything.
Well, over is four. What we've got here, opportunities that we would like. Mr. Allen's brought forward an idea of creating a four door workshop. Great idea. I mean, if we.
Good, good idea.
We're all on the same page. At the end of the day, how we skin these cats really up us, right? And ad hoc committee is one way. If we don't believe that that is an appropriate action, then we can somehow stop killing the same as the finance committee and create a workshop. We can effectively, same thing, I mean, many different paths to the same solution. I, I'm more willing to do the ad hoc committee. If the board feels that we can more effectively do it, if the committee is global with workshop, that's why we need to. We just need to quickly, and we can't sit around and be down on the concrete, and have the issues happen, so.
Can't keep, can't, no.
No, we have, and that's. If that ad hoc committee would have come, or would come, and we just, because that would have been either the Wednesday or Friday of this week, that would be my sense of urgency. But the flip side of that is, if we want to do it via committee, and all of the, you know, all of the stakeholders coming in, it doesn't matter.
Well, if you publish it as an open meeting, any of the board members that wanna go could go, your ad hoc committee.
Well, we can't participate.
Huh?
We can't participate.
In an ad hoc committee?
We can't participate.
As long as it's posted.
No.
No, because that would be irregular.
Can you better not?
We cannot participate in deliberations, if you violation of the only.
So right now, we have a motion, and we have a support on the, on the table.
The finance committee recommendations.
The finance committee recommendations, and we have, I think we can bring the ad hoc committee up next, and we had some discussion about this, so we expect all, say, all both.
And here we are. Call call both, Brian, please.
Mrs. Morris, here. Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Saigman?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Mr. Ruck?
Yes.
Go back to that.
So, Mr. Lang, your approach to form an ad hoc committee, and you have some language for its purpose, then you can send it back, or is that correct? When, if you ask for it in the.
Table it, I told you.
Table it till after this.
So we have a motion by member Saigman, supported by member Lang, and bringing that.
Well, I remove my support. There is, there isn't a motion.
We have to remake the motion. And I'll make the motion that the ad hoc committee be for.
And the motion is your support? No support? Why do we wanna do it? Committee in the hall, finance committee?
My opinion should be a workshop, our board, to the group present their ideas. It's all presented at one time, and we all get the same information at the same time. Get it sorted out.
I agree, I agree with that also. Would you have everybody sharing, they'd like to have a lot more.
But what about all the people that were asked to be on the ad hoc committee already?
They're still happy, they're still there meeting, if you want them to be here.
I would ask also that the building administrators are very aware of probably ways to save costs at the building level, or or things that can be changed and would be very vital, members to contribute when we're discussing this. And, and should, um, we do more, committee at the hall.
That should be invited, and should be invited. I would think you would have a hard time keeping them away. And I hope we would have a hard time keeping everybody else away. You have a time and date on that meeting, though?
But I wanna say, member Lang and I know member Saigman have been involved, and I, I think some of them maybe in the past, where the board has gotten together and we did a teacher plan. When we, we've done that twice, where it was like group of people, and you, you have to be, um, post it notes on the wall, and you start listing things. And then you start identifying, um, like color, red, yellow, greens, and then you, you develop some, some, um, some kind of, uh, list. Things that are, that are very important, yes. That's the kind of workshop you're used to, where you can narrow down.
You've gotta have a facilitator.
And you need a facilitator. But you can, you certainly have the option to have a special meeting, and other people can participate in that. So maybe we'll look at calendars, is it in the next week?
For now?
Yeah.
I, I reserve my Monday nights for this, so, so we're on Monday night, Monday after school.
Yeah, next, next Monday night, one to go. About the 23rd?
No, I'm just not asking besides tonight, on what day, um, you will enter your calendar, get back to Jay, get back to me, we'll publish, whatever you have published.
Okay, we just have one procedural question. After we do all this, this stuff, this process, one of the committees asking, are we making uncountable assumptions? At least they can be quite.
Well, the finance committee will.
I'm asking the question, so we're not making assumptions, right? The finance committee will then be, recently, add output, or vetting it, and whenever they have to do investigations, it's out of, right?
Mrs. Selby, would it be possible to have a recommendation, she, that our teachers could use, um, to submit their ideas? Um, no, you, or to, to the administration of things that they've noticed that could be improved, that could improve the finance. Sometimes it's just a suggestion by scientists, that people at the top don't see, or need work from these. Talk about a form.
At, at one, at one time, Ms. Morris, when I thought we were gonna have the ad hoc committee, all the individual reps were gonna gather that information from their people. Mr. Brown's gonna get it from the teachers.
I think they still should.
Yeah, Mr. Massey was gonna get it from the, from the janitors, steelworkers, um.
Okay, so I think that's a good format, and you don't really need a form for that. They just get the suggestions, ideas to their union reps and, or their groups, whether it's secretaries, uh, V E A, steelworkers. Probably would be helpful if, when they're submitting that suggestion, that they kinda give us a clue to how much money they think we could save. Although they won't know for sure. The people that know for sure, that's finance.
Mr. Brown, have you been gathering anything as of yet?
No, I have not.
How fast do you think you could?
What's that?
How fast do you think you could begin to get some information?
Right away.
Please do so. Everybody.
We're done. We're all done.
You're done?
Steelworkers.
Steelworkers. We turned it all in.
To whom?
Last month, last month, a week ago to that.
Brian, did Brian get it?
Brian, Brian hasn't.
Okay.
Not this stuff.
No, it's all of our steelworkers.
Yeah. We need your input.
We also need the, uh, list of hires and, just got payroll, that we've been asking for since.
I would like to know where that confusion lies myself.
Well, I guess, Larry, I need to know, you want a list of teachers and what steps there are, and I'm, I'm.
I need payroll, right?
I think I am getting some of that information from mine, but I haven't seen it. I think I ended up getting some of that information from Mike, but I haven't seen it.
Yes, well...
Okay. Then I, maybe Mike and I need to have a conversation.
I'm not, yeah.
Okay.
The steelworkers have asked for the same information. They asked for it to be given to them by last Friday. Were they given it?
The steelworkers have not asked me for it.
I got a copy of the letter that, that traced it.
Oh, and maybe it was...
They've been asking for it since last April, I said.
Sometimes they ask for information that they're not, we can't provide. I don't personally even address, I don't have the ability to, and we're still...
I mean, I would like to know if anybody's available for the twenty-third, Monday.
Their teacher conferences are Monday and Tuesday at least.
What a great time to meet new friends.
Well, you won't be able to get there either. We play with our parents.
Well, I'm saying...
Monday, December seventh. Thirty.
I would be on that.
Monday, December seventh, six o'clock.
Here?
Here. That works?
With library.
Library?
No.
I don't care where we're at.
I think you have that.
Not number one.
Okay, library.
Didn't hear that. Well, you gotta be able to read to write.
Special meeting.
Special meeting, six o'clock here. Mr. Brown, do you have some information?
Yes, thank you.
All set, board members? Board and superintendent comments, Mr. Lang?
Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
No. I'd like to make three points. Number one, it doesn't matter how we got here. The reality is that we are who we are. It's our collective job to find the path that leads us to a solid ground and a sustainable future. Two, we need to adopt a doctrine of civility and decorum at this table and in this room. We need to treat others the same way we want to be treated. This is not limited to just the people at this table, it includes all stakeholders. Let's exchange the public rank with the working to find common ground and effective solutions to address the issues. Third point, we all understand that we're in a difficult situation. We have in front of us some difficult choices. And while we need to act with sensitivity, at the same time, we need to act with a sense of urgency and conviction. None of us knows the outcome of the analysis we're in. But we need to be transparent and to have a clear demonstration that our choices we make ultimately have the best results for our students and for the district's long-term viability. To shy away from our fighting shared responsibility out of fear that somehow someone may respond is not what the community and this district needs and expects. If that results in people seeking to remove me from this office, then so be it. I would rather risk being removed while seeking to achieve success than being, while being removed while not being, excuse me, to achieve success than being removed by the bureaucrats from Lansing, because I allow fear to influence my choice. Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
First of all, following Ms. Sylvie's report, I want, like to thank all of the teachers who put in so much time on PLCs. That is a great sacrifice. And I've taught myself for thirty-five years. I know that comes from a dedication, something that really, no one could reimburse you for the time that you're putting in. It comes from a love of teaching and a love of education, a love of students. I get that. But I love to get very frustrated, and I hate to take time to just pour my, but I've gotta pour it out to somebody. My family doesn't wanna hear it when I get home, so. I love to get very frustrated and almost ready to quit. Because I feel like as a board, we've got to understand what it means and not just emotionally follow rumors. We have to go judge things by facts. And when we didn't vote to study the options, I'm like, what are we here for? This is almost ridiculous. I'm glad during the week of the finance committee that all got straightened out. I feel a lot better about that. I'm not a quitter. I want to be a part of this school board, but I do want us to be more open, more transparent. I like the dialogue that took place tonight. We've got to come here and we've gotta ask questions. We've got to talk to one another. We've got to talk to our teachers and our administrators. I know sometimes we don't wanna have open meetings where people get argumentative, and it's too open, and... But we've gotta take a risk and have that dialogue. I think everybody here is respectful and is not going to do anything violent. We've got to talk to people, and we've got to squash rumors. And we've got to make our decisions based on facts. We can't just take rumors and run with it as if it is a fact. And I think we did an excellent job tonight. I congratulate the board and Mr. Long for making your comments, and everybody for participating. Thank you.
I'm here for the children. Again, I wanna thank steelworkers, administration, and the teachers in advance, because I think, kind of the basketball analogy, you're gonna come strong to the hole. That's what I'm looking for. That's what I'm hoping for, this office over here. Because it has to be shared sacrifice. It can't be just one group or two groups. We can do this, and together, I think it can be done. And I'd like to echo this, we have to get good information. And that's what this is about, is getting the information. So again, I wanna thank you all in advance for what we're gonna have, I believe, a start on December seventh. So please talk amongst your groups and come to the hole strong. We need you.
You have before you superintendent district updates. I'm not gonna read all these to you, but I've broken down the updates based on the levels, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. Hopefully you'll take the time to read some of the things that each building has been doing. And I'm gonna tell you that this is just a little bit of what the buildings have been doing. Our buildings have been very, very busy. Ms. Sylvie talked about the professional learning community that the teachers have been engaged in. And the big purpose of the PLCs is to collaborate, to improve instruction. And the teachers have embraced that very well, and hopefully they will continue to. One thing that's not on our report is, and I won't say a whole lot about it right now, but I'll talk more about it at our next meeting. We had our district turnaround network meeting this after, this afternoon. And the whole purpose of the district turnaround network is to explore strategies for rapid turnaround in our district and, I'm talking about academics, not finances, and looking at the best practices. And we have a lot of progress to be made in that area. And this committee, this network, will be exploring ways to do that rapidly and most effectively.